Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilor Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Boule.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Champlin.
Present.
Councilor Fantasy.
Present.
Councilor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Councilor Keach.
Here.
Councilor Credit, here. Councilor Mattson.
Here.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor Mayor McNamara.
She's excused.
Councilor Nian.
Present.
Councilor Pierce.
Present.
Councilor Vice Hawkins.
She's excused.
And Councilor Todd.
Here.
Okay. Good to see everyone. We have the minutes for us for June 5th. Is there a motion?
Approval.
Motion made in second. Are there any changes, suggestions? Saying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. June 5th minutes are adopted. Can I get a motion for the June 12th minutes?
So what?
Motion made in second to approve the June 12th minutes for the city council meeting. Any changes? Saying none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. As having, motion is adopted. Tonight, we have two presentations. First, I'd like to recognize our friends from Concord TV for presentation.
Come on down.
Yeah, we're not used to being on this side of things.
How can you be here and be on TV too?
At the same time. Kind of an inception moment. So, yeah, so, thank you. Yeah, good to be here. So, I'm Concord TV Executive Director Josh Hardy, for those who haven't met me before. And we have Mike O'Meara, our IT Director at Concord TV. For those watching at home or behind us who aren't familiar with Concord TV, we're the nonprofit public access station. Our mission is building community through media. Holistically, we really believe that media can be used for good if it's focused on local and focused on the good things happening in our community. What we do is we run the education, government, and public access programming. And like we have tonight, we are live streaming the city council meeting as we've been doing for a long time. And we actually will be hitting our 25th year coming up next year. So, I was not here for all of it. I'm a little too young for that. I would have been, well, do the math. Strike that from the. And but as you'd remember, that even though the technology has changed over the years, the VHS decks are gone, the equipment in the back has downsized and gotten smaller with digital technology. But really, the mission has always stayed the same, whether it was me or my predecessor Doris. And we're lucky to have a great staff. We have Mike right here. We have Steve Cludier in the back, who is reliable and has been here longer than pretty much anyone from Concord TV. So, a couple of updates I wanted to provide for the council that I thought today would be an appropriate day for is that Breeze Line has finished work and has active the cable access programming on their HD channels. So, for Concord customers, channels 2001, 2003, respectively. So, that's in full definition. You could, we still have Comcast channels to state definition channels. But we did know this month, a letter from Comcast, amongst other programming changes that the government, so, city meetings will be some point in August, instead of channel 17.
Yes, be a constituent probably going to at council meeting next month.
And as for why, we don't, above my age probably, will say that I've noticed in Bedford, New Hampshire, a similar change recently. Noticed Lexington, Mass. So, there are other communities where the government or education or public access gets reassigned to another channel. From our perspective, it means rebranding and mentioning it to the council. And so, the public knows that, like Mike referenced, folks might be confused when they, at some point, switch to channel 17 and it's not the programming they expected. Were there any questions on any of that so far?
Keep going and we'll address them at the end. How's that?
Okay. Sounds good. And then, a couple of other things. Mike wanted to just kind of update the council on just the relationship with the city of Concord. I know you work pretty closely with the PIO, Mike.
Yes, and I just wanted to thank again the council for approving a PIO and say how great it is to work with Stephanie Breton, the PIO for the city. We work very closely together. Much of the video content that you see on the city's YouTube page comes from her direction, her hard work and getting it all put together. So, it's been great to have that working relationship with the city. And we really appreciate that aspect. And we love going to the city events and highlighting all the great things that are going on here.
Yep. Thank you, Stephanie. Yep. So, we have that. Couple other updates. Our first week of summer camps through Concord Parks and Recreation started today. The kids were having a great time, having a great start to their summer. We, for the first time, offered a free workshop through the Loeb School of Communications and hope to keep that partnership up. We actually bring some of their students to our station to teach them about media production, video production. And we will remain busy. We're a small staff, but we are very efficient. I'm always working on new initiatives, ways we can work with the community. And I'm just really proud of what we've done, but certainly always looking to do more. And then, the last thing before any questions from the council is, we mentioned Steve, who's in the back of the room, and I just wanted to recognize him with Concord TV's annual achievement award, which typically does not go to our own staff. But Steve has been with us for nearly 20 years. And we just wanted to say thank you, Steve. It's weird facing this way and he's behind us, but, but thank you, Steve. He is an unsung hero, both for our organization and for public record of meetings. He has been reliable, consistent. When I first started with Concord TV, I learned a lot from his professionalism. And I think every public access station could use a Steve Cludier, and we're lucky that we have him. So, again, thank you, Steve. And we do have a certificate for him that we'll be bringing to him in the back. So, thanks, Steve. And that's it. That's what we've got.
Thank you very much for sharing. Who has questions? Counselor first.
Could you quickly speak to the access through YouTube and how that works?
Yes. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, sure. So, we help maintain the city of Concord's YouTube page. And essentially, all the city meetings that we cover, city council, the planning board meeting, the zoning board meeting, those live stream on the city of Concord's YouTube page. Now, we do maintain separate channels for the public access programming, which are on our Concord TV YouTube page. And then, the school district has their own separate YouTube page where we stream the school board meetings. And so, that the school, the school district was the last one that we had a separate YouTube channel for, but it just kind of makes sense to follow the channels. And especially now that, you know, we'll be on different channels on Breeze Line, different channels on Comcast, that we just go by that government school and, or education and public access sort of thing.
And I would say on top of that, YouTube has been really, really important for just viewership and more people watching. And we're able to actually look at those numbers. And it's hard with the cable channels. We don't get those local Nielsen ratings. So, you don't know really how many are watching on cable programming.
Other than how many calls you hand to us, yeah, when a meeting isn't going.
Oh, yeah. If they can't hear it, then, then we find out. But YouTube has been a terrific driver of analytics. And we've seen viewership go up across our YouTube platforms just in the last couple of years.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just taking off of the YouTube channel comment there, which I'm glad, like Counselor Pierce asked about it. I encourage people to just pick through that and watch some of those videos. I just want to commend you for, not only for your, your working with the city and recording all of these great events that go on, but also the professionalism and the quality of the videos that you're doing. They're really outstanding. So, again, that's why I encourage folks to just pop into the YouTube channel and pick some out. I'll give you one as an example, the recent one, the White Park Splash Pad video. It's such an enjoyable little video to watch and just watching all the kids. And then, I also had a question of, well, who was the camera, did this camera person get wet? How did they do this video?
Magic.
Leading in and out of the, you know, while the.
We, we did recruit a youngster for that.
Did you? All right. Well, good. Very good. Well, it maybe has a future career with the organization.
We try. We try. We need to keep that pipeline going.
You gotta do that. That's good. So, anyway, I just wanted to, again, just express my appreciation and also do really, I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Anything else?
So, I just want to say, Josh, thank you very much for the hard work on the contract. It was very well done on your end. So, thank you. And pass on, Mike and Steve have been fantastic to work with over the years, many years, it seems like now. So, they're always there when we need things. And the secret to what Mike did was he gave one of the youngsters the GoPro and told him to go. And the kid took off.
And he was a pro.
It was a great idea. So, it was well done. And I think it really did, for a lot of children watching at home, it really did give them an idea of what that experience, if they did come. And if you go out there now, you see the children just absolutely love it. So, well done, Michael.
Thanks.
Thank you. I think you've heard what I probably wanted to say, and Counselor Todd probably said it much better. I'm going to, but I just wanted you to know how important you are to this community. You keep us connected to the residents. You keep the residents connected to what's going on, whether it be in their government of, you know, schools or city and such. And the role that you play, I think, by far, you are one of the most important entities within this city. And the things that you do to keep us all connected, it's so critically important to our democracy and making sure people are well aware. So, I really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate that. Thank you, gentlemen.
And congratulations to Steve behind the curtain.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a second presentation tonight. And it is my pleasure to welcome our friends from Twin State Energy. It's a pretty good start to get the city manager to move furniture for you.
I was warning them about the stairs I gotta watch.
Watch it myself. What's his password? Can you read it?
Star, star, star.
Just change it. It's wrong. Nobody can talk while doing this. A, B, C, D, E. It happens all the time.
90 days.
Is that a capital P on password?
Do you have 16 characters yet?
There we go. Just kidding. Okay. Welcome. And if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves, that'd be great.
For the record, my name is Caitlin Monroe. And I work with Hilltop Public Solutions, but I'm working with National Grid on the Twin States Clean Energy Link. I have with me Tehran Hill. He's project director. And I will actually let him introduce the rest of the folks that we have here with National Grid.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you today.
Introduce Jess.
I'm Jess Farrell. I'm a principal engineer in the overhead transmission line engineering group at National Grid.
And Cory?
Cory Schutzen, lead environmental scientist, National Grid.
First, thank you so much for making the time for us to come just top line on this project. For anyone who remembers Granite State Power Link, this is essentially the same project running through Concord. It is a 1,200 megawatt bidirectional transmission power line running from Canada to Londonderry. We are going to run through the map. We're going to talk a little bit about the U.S. Department of Energy RFP that we've responded to and kind of run through the need for this project and some of the benefits. So, without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Tehran.
Thank you, Caitlin. A pleasure to be here with you today. When you think about New England, there is a critical need to get more affordable and cleaner energy to customers. Many of you, many of your customers know that bills are very high. Part of the reason is that we're highly dependent on natural gas fire generation. And the only way to mitigate that is to bring additional, more diverse resources to bear. And so, what National Grid is proposing today is a new transmission line that will utilize existing corridors in order to bring affordable hydro power from Quebec to New England. What's different about this project is that this project will also be able to utilize renewable resources here in New England, such that when the wind's not blowing or the sun's not shining, we will bring hydro down to balance those resources in order to keep a reliable electric grid. But if there's too much wind and too much solar, we'll be able to send that power to Quebec for them to utilize our resources here in New England when we don't need them. There's vast resources of hydro power in Quebec that, that New England's been utilizing for the past 30 years. National Grid, we operate the Phase 2 interconnector, which is, brings in roughly 10% of our energy consumption on a daily basis. And so, our proposal today is for a new project that will bring in additional supplies. It's important to note that we're proposing this project through the U.S. Department of Energy's Transmission Facilitation Program. That was a program that was passed as part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And it's through that program that we'll be able to accelerate development of this project in order to have an anchor tenant that will help us to move development of this project forward. We recently, just last week, filed our application to that RFP. And that's an important step in this process. We're expecting that DOE will announce the winners, and this is a national competition later this fall. So, here's the route that we're proposing. As I said before, we're proposing to utilize existing corridors in order to bring this forward. So, unlike previous attempts to bring in more transmission, more hydro power from Quebec, that our project does not require any new right-of-way. What we're proposing is that if you look at the Vermont side of the map, at the international border crossing, that we will cross into Quebec in Canada, Vermont, and utilize existing state roadways and bury the line underground, under the state roads. We will cross underneath the Connecticut River, such that we're not disturbing the Connecticut water bridge because we're not going through the river. We're going underneath it in roughly the area of Dalton, New Hampshire. From in Dalton, New Hampshire, we will pick back up state roads, Route 135, to Moreau, New Hampshire, the Comerford substation. It's important that we get to the Moreau, New Hampshire, the Comerford substation, because that's a substation that already exists. And so, we utilize the existing land that's there to build a converter station for the HBDC line. And then, we will pick up the right-of-way that already exists, starting from Moreau down to Londonderry. And so, we will construct and upgrade the transmission lines that exist within that right-of-way, such that it can carry the additional 1,200 megawatts. And then, also build two substations, one in Dunbar and one in Londonderry, for the conversion to higher voltage.
I'll let you go.
There are tons of benefits that we see from this project. I already talked about how it will help to reduce energy bills. For New Hampshire, we're talking roughly, on average, about $50 million each year, on average, that bills, energy costs will be reduced for the state of New Hampshire. As well as job creation. Over 700 jobs that will construct the overhead line for, for this project, in which we have partnered with IBW in order to ensure those are good-paying union jobs. All of the communities will also see additional property revenue that National Grid will pay as we're upgrading these facilities and the increased value of our assets, our taxable access. And so, we will pay those, those additional tax revenues to, to the city. And I think I have a slide later in which we give an estimate of what we believe Concord is going to be. The, also, an important aspect of this project is that we're partnering with a nonprofit, Citizens Energy. Citizens Energy, you may be familiar with Joe Candy's senior's work, in which he created a nonprofit to help low-income customers. That same nonprofit exists today. And we're partnering with them in order to reinvest over $200 million back into the communities through the route communities and environmental justice communities, including Concord, which is listed as an environmental justice community. We're estimating, based on our calculations, based on the amount of assets that's in the city of Concord, a little under 2 miles for additional payment. So, this is in addition to what National Grid, National Grid listed is the operating company New England Power pays today, on top of that additional $75,000 on average each year.
And to be clear, this is specific to Concord. There is a state tax piece of this, but this is strictly for Concord. And again, we're 100% within the existing right-of-way. We're not going to need to clear trees. This will be a vegetation management. There will be some vegetation management needed. But National Grid has done a really excellent job of making sure that their right-of-way is cleared to the full width. So, there won't be any major tree clearing. And again, we're looking at about 1.9 miles through Concord. So, we also have a map here. I think it's probably going to be hard for folks to see. But there's a black line in the northwest corner of Concord that goes through. That is the existing line, and that is. That is the existing line, and that is what we're talking about as far as where the upgrades would be.
If you're standing in that right-of-way, that next slide shows what that right-of-way actually looks like. So there's one very large tower that's 110 feet high, that's the DC line that I talked about earlier. That's the project that brings over 2,000 megawatts of power into New England that already exists. Adjacent to it are two smaller lines that are, right now, rated 230 voltage. What we're gonna do is upgrade those lines, so string new wire and hang new insulators, the things that are hanging from the structures, in order to carry the additional 1,200 megawatts, so we're gonna upgrade them to 345 KV.
So yeah, just to reiterate, this is what it looks like today, and the goal is for it to look similar to this tomorrow. So there will be some instances where these two structures on the sides will have to be raised, or to, you know, either be upgraded, Jess is really the expert here, or have to be raised to deal with the additional voltage and the distance from the ground. But nothing is going to be taller than this 110-foot DC line in the middle. Anything else on that, Jess?
No. So, like Caitlin was saying, we have kind of two ways to go about increasing tower heights. The first way we do it is by installing extensions to the existing towers. So if you think of them like erector sets, you basically unbolt them at the base and pop in these two triangular pieces that lift them up either five or 15 feet. So again, you're looking at the existing structure just a little bit taller. Our other option is to replace the structure with a galvanized steel pole in the same width as the existing, so that way we're not needing to expand any rights or do any additional work.
But for the most part, after construction, what you see today is basically what you're gonna see tomorrow.
Anything else on this? I know you're probably gonna add on to whatever I have to say on this part, but part of what my role especially is on this project is really working with National Grid, working with host communities. We're gonna be hosting town halls, we're gonna be hosting public forums, we're going to have lots of opportunities to really interact with the public and make sure that communities, residents, businesses, you know, community groups, elected officials, landowners, that everyone knows what the project is. And if they have questions or they have concerns, they know who they can contact. And that they are available and that they will get a response. And that if anybody has concerns now, we are at the infancy of this project. This is, we really launched this project at the end of April. And so although we're moving pretty quickly through our outreach program to really get this project in front of folks, we are at the very, very beginning of it. So now is a great time for questions, comments, concerns, anything that, you know, any issues that folks have, we wanna know about it. We have, we'll hand out some of our cards, so you can have them in your back pocket in the event that any of your constituents reach out and say, hey, what's the deal, who do I talk to about this? Our goal and our commitment is to be in front, to communicate early and to communicate often. We're not, we're excited, we're proud, this is a great project, and we wanna be as transparent as possible. So on this slide, you have our website, you have our outreach email, you have our hotline, lots of different ways to be in touch with us. And as we kind of go through and build our community and stakeholder outreach plans, we'll be in touch with the council, because even though I grew up here and I still live here, there are people and there are groups, and there is always somebody that you all know better than we ever could. So we just wanna make sure that the door is open, and you know who to talk to.
Two things to add to that. So it takes a long time to build transmission. And we're hoping to be, and we are gonna be, as transparent and as dedicated to meeting with members of the public and communicating as often as possible. We actually wanna over-communicate. When we do that, that way people are informed about the project, and we can mitigate any concerns easier when we hear the concerns upfront. We won't start siting and permitting until later this year, and that's when that official process will kick off. But right now, it's really about getting out into the public, meeting with all of the different host communities, and really trying to educate as many people about this project and hear feedback. We actually, we really, that's why we have our engineers here today, our environmental scientists, because we need that feedback in order to build a better project. We believe we have a very strong project, but it can become even stronger with communication and feedback. We will start permitting siting later this year, that's a two-year process, so you're not talking about starting construction until 2026, and you're not talking about finishing construction until 2030, the end of 2030. So it takes time to build these projects. Second, I go back to what I mentioned earlier about the citizen partnership that we have, and the $200 million in reinvestment. These are after-tax profits that we will reinvest back into the community. Concord is one of the environmental justice communities on our list. And we really would like to make sure that we're reaching out to your constituents in ways that we can use that money and reinvest right back here in Concord. So if there's any further discussions that we can have in order to get better ideas of how we can utilize that reinvestment opportunity, we would love to have that conversation.
I think that's it. So if anybody has questions?
I really appreciate your presentation, thank you very much. Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, just to make sure I'm clear on this. Essentially, the project is going to bury lines where existing above-ground infrastructure does not exist, and where existing above-ground infrastructure does exist, you'll be following those right-of-ways and essentially not going any higher with the towers than they already exist. Is that right?
That's essentially correct, yes.
Great. Follow-up? Could you kind of explain the process involved in your $2 million reinvestment program? How the money is going to be divided among the various communities, what the application process is, things like that?
Yes, so we've been in discussions with many different organizations throughout the state, including the community college system, and thinking about ways, programs that we can design around workforce development. We're very hopeful that we will be able to utilize local and community labor wherever we can. So we're recognizing that that may require some workforce training in order to allow that to happen. So we're talking to community colleges right now around training and that kind of thing, such that we can bring that labor into construction of the asset. The other conversations we're having are with folks around energy efficiency, community solar. Right now, it's really been a lot of conversations, some programs need to be designed from the bottoms up, other programs are programs that exist already, and that we're hoping to attach ourselves to those programs.
Great, thank you.
So I just had four, four quick things. You mentioned DOE approval somewhere along the line by the end of the year.
Yes.
Is that kind of a, if you get it, you move forward, if you don't get it, you don't move forward?
Yes, so the Transmission Facilitation Program is really, it's not a grant program. DOE is signing up as a customer, and they will actually buy the capacity from the project. They're looking at transmission projects across the country, recognizing that a lot of these projects don't go forward because they don't have an anchor tenant. And so we're competing against eight other projects across the US for DOE to become that first anchor customer.
Are they being awarded on a regional basis, or a...?
They're being awarded nationally.
Okay.
Our project is a project where New England, for the last past few years, has been suffering with energy security issues. So we're very hopeful that DOE will recognize that the pressing need for New England with the high energy prices and the dependency on natural gas, they will pick our project.
And the important part about this program is that it really helps take away the risk of the project moving forward, and really kind of helps abbreviate the process, because we already, you know, have this first anchor tenant or this first off-taker. So it allows us to construct and then kind of build up on the utilities that will eventually get the energy.
Since it is a competitive program, we're very eager to ensure that DOE sees the need, not just from National Grid and Twin States, but from members of the public and folks like yourself. And so we have been asking for layers of support to be sent to the Department of Energy, such that you can see that this project has support from the local communities.
It needs to be a permissible, viable project that, you know, DOE knows, okay, if we're gonna put our ring in the hat, if we're gonna put our hat in the ring, we know that this is something that communities understand, they're aware of, they support it, and they recognize the need.
You mentioned that the structures may be a little bit higher, 10, five to 15 feet higher, but the ones on the side, the...
Yeah, it'll be the two structures on the outside edge of the right-of-way, and it'd be between generally 10 and 15 feet where we need to increase height, and that's approximately 30% of the structures along the length of the line, and there's about 2,200 structures.
Is that due to the weight of the lines, or is that due to the power going through the lines?
So the increase in voltage requires that we keep a greater distance above ground with the new wire, and we're using a high-temperature, low-sag conductor. So it's a specialized wire that doesn't sag as much to try to minimize the amount of structure replacements and height increases that we have to make. But due to, you know, a number of different factors, like the underlying terrain, land use and things like that, there are instances where we will need to increase height.
Okay, so that was my follow-up question, is that would there be, so even if you can keep the structure heights down on the side, would there, could there be additional structures?
Right now, we're not really looking at intermediate structures, unless there's a compelling reason for us to do so. So if we can kind of move structures around to minimize environmental impacts or impacts to butters, we'll take that into consideration as we go through and define the scope.
That's a great answer. You mentioned the environmental justice approach to this, which I, which, congratulations on taking that approach. I just, and this of course will be up to the city council, but I'd ask you to focus on Ward 1 and Ward 2, where this impact is gonna be really the greatest, from a political standpoint, not political standpoint, the wards are on that area, and the section is going through Ward 1 and Ward 2. So those two gentlemen on the end there that you might wanna be talking to.
Absolutely.
And from the last point, if you do move forward, I'd encourage you to work with the city and Stephanie Breton, our public information officer. It might make sense to have a direct link on the city's website, so people from Concord are going to look for the latest information that, so I assume you're going to create your own webpage for this and give regular updates on where the process is?
And we have, the Twin States Clean Energy Link is a website in existence now, and we have fact sheet, we have route maps, we have a FAQ, we have, you know, different community benefits information on there. And as, as I said, because we are pretty early on, you know, as our, you know, economic studies and as like more information that we get, and as that comes in and as the project develops, we'll be updating the website and updating folks. And I know we're also planning a newsletter, and so there will be other opportunities and ways for folks to get regular updates.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, I just wanna follow up on the heels of Counsel Chaplin and our city manager, Mr. Espell. You probably are well aware that our community still suffers from PTSD with regards to Northern Pass.
Yes.
And when you mention the words "hydro Quebec," that will automatically raise concern in our community. So I'm very glad to hear you echo Counsel Chaplin's question about the height and the city manager's. When we heard 150 feet, it scaled to 160 feet, which scaled to 170 and 175, and it just elevated, so to speak, for lack of a better term, the stress in our community. So I appreciate that what you're presenting to us is at 110 feet, thereabouts. Trust me when I tell you that the community is likely gonna hold you to that number, so just so that you're aware. Secondly, I do appreciate that you are looking at existing lines. We, as a community, are very focused on not continuing a divide in our city. And the previous proposal was going to divide our city in half further than what we've already had by other infrastructure projects and transportation related to the city. So I, again, would just say that I know that we will do it on the council, that if you sway from that path, it's going to sway the public input, because they will feel as though you weren't telling them the truth.
Absolutely.
So I just wanna make sure that we're clear, 110 feet, it's gonna stay on existing, the vegetation you clear is not widening a swath through our community, and that you must understand and appreciate that the community will hear "hydro Quebec", and they will automatically turn to what happened at Northern Pass.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think that's really the beauty of this project, is that we already have a path that we can use. And our goal, and I think National Grid's goal is really to be thoughtful and to look at a project and look at a route that the community would support, that people could get behind, that people could really understand, okay, one, we need this, and two, they're doing everything in their power to make sure that this is something that isn't disruptive, that is not going to have extreme environmental impacts, that's not gonna have extreme visual impacts. And so the goal was really, how can we put something together that's going to not just bring power through, but is actually going to build support around this project? So I 100% respect and absolutely value that input, because I think it's definitely something, and that made me excited to work on this project, because I was like, thank goodness, this is something that we can really, that we can work with, you know?
Counsel Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, first to comment, while Northern Pass was going on, some of the folks in this room maybe remember a project called Granite State Power Link. And we put people in the room, and transparency-wise, I worked for that project back six or eight years ago. And I can attest to the folks working with the folks at National Grid, and I have nothing to do with this now, but it's, I remember meeting the engineer and having Jess involved with some of the community meetings, and what they say is, they mean what they say. My question is, on the process, and I certainly understand it, but if you are selected, do you have to go through the site evaluation committee?
Yes.
And would their rule change, haven't they had some recent rule changes where it should take a little less time? Or are those just proposed?
The changes to the site evaluation committee, as far as I know, are still being retained in committee.
Okay.
But by the time we get there...
I don't know, and I don't know that those changes, based on our conversations in the past, are enough to really change the process enough to impact our application.
At the end of the day, whatever rules or mandates exist, we're gonna follow those mandates.
And we're going to exceed them, hopefully.
Well, if I may, just one other comment. Would you believe that I really appreciate what you're doing, the community benefit portion of this? This was not around during Granite State Power Link. And having citizens and having other people involved in this, I think makes the project better, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Madsen?
Thank you. So while I was listening to the presentation, and the two-side towers are 60, and you said they would not exceed 110. So they could potentially be three towers that are 110, all the way down through, or...
Potentially, in limited instances, so it would be very rare. And really what we're looking at is you've got the 60-foot towers averages. So 60-foot towers on the outside edge of the right-of-way, we're seeing about 75-foot when we need to make a structure replacement or put in a tower extension. So it's the approximate average height post modification.
So when you're talking about the 1.9 miles through Concord, and I know that this project, you're talking years, but is there some sort of an idea on that timeline of what would be going on in Concord?
That, we do not have that level of detail at this point. There are a lot of moving parts to building out, you know, it's 220 miles of overhead electric transmission line, coordinating outages, et cetera. But for all of that, you know, we'll have Caitlin and her team communicating the full length of the way, so that we're not surprising anybody.
Absolutely.
Are there wetlands through that area in Concord?
I believe it actually goes over the Kootokuk.
If I may, if you went Horse Hill Road, you can see the existing right-of-way now, sorry.
It's okay, gotcha, that's what I was gonna ask about, which is that for our purposes, what's handy is to have a more detailed map than you were commenting yourselves on the one with the black line. It would be good to be able to, you may have this already, I don't know, do you? If not, at the right point, for outreach to the community, what's best is to be able to have a real detailed map where folks can kind of hone in specifically on a piece of property.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of like what we have for the city of our GIS, where you can really go right in and get close. That way, folks can get more knowledge about what the potential impact might be and how it might affect actual butters and that kind of thing. So that will be something that will be very helpful whenever you have that. That's when, at the appropriate time, we could, I could start outreach to residents as well, so.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Well, first of all, thank you very much for spending some time with us and sharing the project. I really appreciate the conversation around outreach and communications with the community. the community. With any big project, the more we can communicate, the better, and takes the fear out of people's minds. Caitlin, I know how good you are at that, so I have full confidence. I will reiterate what the manager said, those two gentlemen right there in wards one and one-two, you're going to be your best friends. I would get to know that really well. You may also have another member sitting around this table who might be a neighbor up there, so communicating with the butters are probably a really good idea.
No, that's, we, once, you know, once we get closer to construction and we really start our outreach, we will be canvassing, you know, there will be, no one will be surprised when, you know, there's some, when anything is happening near their house. So.
Odds are he'll be holding a grandchild when you show up. Anyway, well, thank you. See you in a further course. Thank you very much. Really appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want me to close this?
Yeah, if you want to, do you want to leave the presentation, or you want to send me, and I can put it on the city's website, or?
Yeah.
If you want, just so people can go and look at it.
I will, I'll email it over to you.
Okay. That takes us to our agenda. I will look for the motion for the consent agenda, but before I do, I will just simply announce that Item Twenty-Six has been removed by Counsel Brown. Counsel Brown has recused herself from Item Fifteen and Sixteen, and with that, can I get a motion?
With approval.
Motion made second to, uh, motion made second to approve, try it again. Yes, motion made second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Consent agenda is approved. Takes us to our public hearings this evening, and Madam Clerk, item thirty-eight, please.
Yes, it's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Traffic Code, Chapter Eighteen, Parking, Parking Time Limited in Designated Places for Section of Washington Street in Pennecook.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Members of the council, on December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, Carrie Noe, a resident of Number Six, Washington Street in Pennecook, contacted Counselor Todd, who's the Chair of the Parking Committee, and requested that the two-hour time limit on Washington Street, again, the Washington Street that's in Pennecook, located between seventy-five feet and a hundred and fifty feet from Village Street, be removed. During the March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting, we're going to review the request, and then it was information presented that time. Upon review, the Parking Committee voted unanimously to recommend the elimination of the two-hour time limit on Washington Street. Upon removal of the time zone, this is on the north side, between seventy-five to a hundred and fifty feet on Village Street. Upon removal of the time zone, on-street parking at this location will become an unregulated parking zone, subject to the city's forty-eight-hour parking limit and parking ban ordinances. As revitalization of the Pennecook Village continues and associated demand for parking increases, competition for these non-timed, limited parking spaces may intensify and could result in additional parking issues for the neighborhood, essentially more work for the Parking Committee. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager? Seeing none. Anyone wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, and we will close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, item thirty-B, please.
It's a resolution establishing an assessing reserve fund for the purposes of funding assessing department projects, appropriating the sum of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars as a transfer to the assessing reserve, and authorizing the use of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance for this purpose retroactive to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
You know, our members of the council saw this project, in particular, is the full-measure-enlist project, which will involve City of Concord contracting with an outside appraisal firm to inspect and verify the physical data collected for each city property. This project is also intended to include a full assessment reevaluation of all city properties. This project is expected to span over two years, with funding projected in the fiscal years twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement program. Total project cost be approximately seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Of course, we need to hire someone to do it first before we get the full price. Funding for this project is planned from the assessing reserve, proposed in the resolution that you have in front of you. This plan necessitate transfers into the reserve account from unassigned fund balance, year-end future year-end surpluses and funding sources as deemed appropriate by the city council. We'll look at those going forward into future months. Glad to answer any questions.
Wish questions for the manager? Seeing none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to testify on this item? Good evening.
Good evening, mayors, members of the city council, city manager and city clerk. I'm Roy Schweiker. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At the last meeting, I made some comments about assessing, and I was told to talk to the city assessor, so I did. And what concerns me, incidentally, I'm in favor of this reassessment, but I think we need to go a little bit further. Right now, the city of Concord, for some reason, essentially does not assess amenities on lots. They only assess the building, and then it's kind of like the same. And I was objecting to the fact that it seems that, you know, paved driveway costs you money to put it in, makes the property more valuable, you know, nice landscaping, you know, costs money, makes the property more valuable. If you talk to any individual or any realtor, they'll tell you the same thing. Well, the city assessor doesn't seem to agree. But I decided to make a study. So, he sent me a list of all the properties that were sold in the last year, and I went and looked at about a hundred of them. And what I did was identified like five percent of them that had really nice landscaping. And, you know, you can argue about this, well, it may not have been, had that landscaping when the property was sold, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, I did it. And then I took the difference between the assessed value and the value of the property sold for. And I discovered that the ones that had the nice landscaping, on the average, was a nine-thousand-dollar difference, that they were nine-thousand, you know, the. So, all the surrounding lots should be increased. Well, that isn't done. The lot value was the same as it was before they tore it down. It's not increased by the amount they paid for the building and the expense of tearing it down. And what really ticked me off is, I don't know if any of you read the stuff for next month, or wait till next month to read it, but you've got a proposal for a public hearing next month regarding a project where a church is to be renovated and housed. And it's another one of these giveaways where the developer gets the taxable assessment reduced for seven years. But what I found most interesting is that the developer's going to put six million dollars into this project, and the value he's going to pay taxes on for seven years is 1.2 million. Well, you know, that's fairly straightforward. What I found most interesting is, after those seven years, this property will not be assessed at the six million dollars that he spent on it, but only at 3.2 million, because apparently all of the, you know, commercial properties get this break. I don't know how come a property that the developer, knowing what he's getting into and spending six million on, is suddenly worth only 3.2, but that's outrageous. So, I think that we need to tell this assessor that's assessing all the stuff in Concord that we need to get the commercial properties assigned a fair value and not given 50% tax breaks. And, you know, there are people in the city that have trouble paying taxes. And that's because, you know, first off, the rich people are getting the break on not including amenities in the assessed value, and secondly, the commercial properties getting this huge reduction. And I hope next month, when you present that project, you have somebody explain why if this guy's putting six million dollars into a project, it's only worth 3.2 million. You're going to tell this guy he's an idiot or what? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Fennessey.
Thank you, Mr. Schweiker. Good to see you, as always. When you did your evaluation, what was the standard that you used for good landscaping?
The answer is, it was purely subjective. Like I said, I'm not either an assessor or a landscape architect, but I think I know, you know, a nice-looking, you know, property when I see it, and the number I picked was five percent of the total. So, you know, I think I had, you know, fairly high standards for, you know, a nice thing. It had to have, you know, nice shrubbery, you know, driveway, everything had to be nice. It wasn't just somebody had a few flower pots on the stairs. I mean, I'm sure there's gradations to this, and a professional assessor could put in more gradations than I did, but I had to just do something I could do in a reasonable amount of time, and, you know, without being an expert on this, that's what I did. I just picked five percent of them. It looked really nice. And I'll be happy to give you a list of them if you want to check them out and see if you think they're really nice.
Anyone else?
Counsel Japp, thanks, Your Honor. I add to Counselor Fennessey, my welcome. That's always good to see you, always good to talk to you, either here or on the street. My question is, again, regarding your proposal that we include an assessment of landscaping, you know, property improvements like that. Do you have any concern that if we were to go down that path, that it would have a disincentive on people actually improving their property, would encourage, you know, people, you know, leaving their property in disorderly states?
I'm going to say that it might affect some few people, but I think the people that are doing the kind of landscaping I'm talking about, it's not going to affect them at all, because I'm sure they spent, you know, thousands of dollars on this landscaping, and the fact they're going to have to pay three-hundred dollars a year extra in taxes on it is probably not going to be that much of a disincentive to them. I mean, nine-thousand dollars at thirty dollars a thousand, you know, it's 270 dollars a year, and that's peanuts compared to what they're probably putting into maintaining that nice stuff. And as far as the paved driveways, I think people have a paved driveway, because it's easier to shovel snow off of, it looks nicer, you don't have your car sinking into it. I mean, that's another objection I have with this. I mean, the city says I have a stone driveway. I have a clay driveway. When I had my car with little wheels, I sometimes had to get a jack and jack the wheels up and put a board under, because they just spin. And, but they say it's stone, huh? Why's that? I've got a building in the back of my property that I, is a shed. They call it a two-car garage. I've lived there fifty years. I've never had a car in that building. I don't know if I could get one in it, but they still call it a two-car garage. And both of these have been explained to them in writing, and they won't even change the card. And maybe that's because they figure it doesn't matter, we're not assessing driveways, so it doesn't matter what kind of a driveway it is. But, you know, this whole business is highly inaccurate. Since you're putting this money into fixing it, you might as well fix it right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Counsel Pierce.
Thank you for your testimony. You answered, I was going to ask you if you had nice landscaping and a paved driveway, but you already answered that. What, in your statements, what does that have to do with putting this money in reserve?
The answer is that I assume it will cost more to have them spend a little bit of time looking at the amenities on the lot. And you probably should put a little bit more money reserve. Does that make sense to you? No. Thank you for your answer. I do appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mrs. Schweiker, good to see you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Takes us to our action phase. Madam Clerk, item thirty-one, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Traffic Code, Parking Time Limited in Designated Places, Washington Street in Pennecook.
Thank you very much. We have a motion.
With approval.
Second.
Motion made second to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it. Motion's adopted. Item Thirty-Two, please.
It's a resolution establishing an assessing reserve for the fund for the purposes of funding assessing department projects, appropriating the sum of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars as a transfer to the assessing reserve, and authorizing the use of three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars from unassigned fund balance for this purpose retro to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
With approval.
Second.
We have a motion, motion made seconded to approve this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ready for question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Have received and answered by two-thirds. The motion is adopted. We have no reports to sort of new business, so unfinished business. Is there anybody who would like to make any comments, or Counsel Japp?
Thanks, Your Honor. Two items. First, just like to mention that the Change for Concord and the Project Story are hosting a Keach Park Light Celebration on Saturday, July twenty-second. I'm disappointed I'm going to be out of town on a trip, but it sounds like a great event. It's at Keach Park from two to five P.M. I believe there'll be a soccer game between Change for Concord and, and Project Story teams. Food, music, and generally a celebration of this body and the community's decision to install lights at Keach Park. I hope that many people will be there in lieu of my participation. I really am disappointed I'll be missing it. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I just wanted to mark the passing of someone who is not only a great person, but also a huge community asset, and that's John Gaffair, who passed away this weekend. Those of us in the city know John. He was the principal of a company video. John did many community videos. I mentioned to my wife yesterday, he did a video of the Beaver Meadows Schools' production of, junior production of Moana this year, which, and everybody, of course, who has a grandson or a child in that, got a video of the production that John produced. John also was a noted documentarian. He produced a number of documentaries on New Hampshire history and historical figures. He has most recently been very important in the Concord Historical Society, acting as their front man, organizing Thursday historical lectures at Kimball Jenkins Estate. He has been an essayist and contributor to the Concord Monitor. He's been a member of the Creative Concord Committee for, almost since its inception, and a valued advisor on any number of some community and historical projects. This is a huge loss to the city, not to mention to his, his family, and we're really going to miss him. And I just wanted to, to note that during this meeting. There are many important people in this community who do important work, and each time we lose one, it is, it leaves just a huge gap, not only in our community, but in our hearts. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counsel Todd. Thank you, Your Honor. I have one announcement, but I also wanted to add that John Gaffair certainly will be missed. We did a lot, did a lot of work with him personally on the Concord Two-Fiftieth Celebration. He was very animated and very interested and involved, and he had a key role in regard to the time capsule and working on that. Something he was very interested in, and he really enjoyed it. So, have fond memories of John. He will be missed. My announcement is that on Saturday, July twenty-ninth, from one to four, the Pennecook Historical Society will host its old-fashioned Family Fun Day. And this will be at their facilities at eleven Pennecook Street. Everyone is welcome to this free community event, which will feature games, refreshments, and penny candy. It's a great opportunity to explore the historic buildings and the community garden, and view the Abbott-Downing Historical Society collection of Concord coaches and other vehicles. So, if you want, if you're interested in getting a close look at the Concord coaches, this is a great opportunity for that. So, hope to see you there. That's, again, that's Saturday, July twenty-ninth, from one to four.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have a request of this council. Late this afternoon, I was notified that an agenda item, a consent item, was pulled. I take what I do as a counselor very seriously, and I want to make sure that I'm well-researched when I discuss an item that's important to the city. So, I would just remind the counselors, if you didn't already know, that Section Three, Item Number Seven of the, the city, the rules of the council, say that if you're going to pull something from the agenda, that it be done by noon the day of the meeting. Now, I know that's not always possible, things happen, but I, I don't sit by my email and. But I, I don't sit by my email and wait for things to, for notification to come. So, I would just ask that this council, please give each other in the city the courtesy of adhering to the guideline that has worked so well in the past in this rule. So, thank you very much. That's my request.
Counsel Craven?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to extend my appreciation to Counselor Chaplin and also Counselor Todd. John Gaffair was a personal friend of my family's. And I am heartbroken, and I didn't have the heart to say it because I really don't have the spirit yet for John's passing. But for our residents of Board Three, John was our supervisor of the checklist, and he will be missed at this coming election, but more so at the presidential primary that is coming next year. And we are heartbroken. Thank you. Thanks for your words.
Rowan?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the library's summer reading theme is All Together Now, and they have a great selection of community-themed titles. So, I would encourage counselors and residents alike to pick up one of those books, and they can drop it off when they're done at the new library bin that is up at the Heights. I'm excited about that. And in keeping with the idea of All Together Now and community, I would like folks to participate in a community meeting Wednesday, July twelfth, the Beaver Meadow Clubhouse at eight A.M. You should participate, especially if you are not a golfer or a skier, because these are your tax dollars at work. Also, on August first, it is National Night Out, and I will be giving out one hundred bike helmets. And I hope folks come and see me and talk to me about biking, to learn about safe places to bike. What would it take for you to get on a bike versus a car? Would it take safe roads, training, group rides? Come talk to me and take a picture as a city counselor. So, I'm looking forward to seeing folks at Rollins Park from five to eight, August first. It is a Tuesday. It's going to be awesome. Touch a truck, meet the K-9 demonstra, there's, there'll be K-9 demonstration, police and fire equipment. Food is only a dollar, so it's a wonderful community event. Looking forward to seeing everyone there.
What else?
You bring up John Gaffair, he truly will be missed. But, time over this weekend, and it probably won't for a long time. John was a really special individual. I think probably most special was his relationship with Lisa and Brinkley. And what a wonderful father and husband he, he really was. And I think it spoke to who he was and about. But I want to share a John story that hopefully will make us feel a whole lot better. So, I had the opportunity to sit on the commission at the State House when we redid the dome on the, on the State House building. And I came up with an idea. I said, hey, how about we video this and let's watch the progression of this? And they said, fine, then you raise the money and you figure out who's going to do it. And I said, okay. So, I, I went to some, a few folks in the community, raised the money. And I approached John and I said, I got a great idea for you. How about you go? But he actually, so he, he went up there the first time that they were there. And these, these construction workers were like, who the heck are you? And what do you think you're going to be doing? You know, just get out of our way. Well, he ended up, because of who he is and his way to communicate and make feel, people feel comfortable, he became one of the team. I mean, he literally became one of the construction folks on top of this, on the state. And he had. They used cameras there. I watched the progress. There's actually a video of it, and they found it. Good, I think, the State House. Have this one, I heard to do this, um, he did a couple of it. And how he became part of this process itself. He truly been. There's.
We're. I. So. That. So that. Know what that process is. We look at the different appointments on our agenda. Different, um, grade. Some were submitted early, some were submitted late, some more information than others. I feel that we should standardize it and make it easy for people to search for vacancies, to apply. And I feel that we should also be respectful of those that do apply. And if they are not considered, they should know early on that they, why they were not considered for a committee. I would.
Thank you very much. Any comments regarding the actual item?
I can just say that at the last council meeting, I had talked about two individuals that submitted interest in April, and those two individuals are not, were not nominated.
Okay. Is there a motion on the?
Move. Item twenty-six?
Motion made in second in item twenty-six. Is there any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none. Thank you for your comments, by the way. I'll take into consideration. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And the I's have it. Motion, item twenty-six is approved. Takes us to the end of our agenda. Anyone else have anything before we move on for the evening? Okay.
Take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion made in second to adjourn. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The I's have it. Have a wonderful week, everyone.